Okay, next item is approval of the agenda. Does anyone have anything they'd like to add or alter on the agenda?
If there's no additions or alterations to the agenda, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Support it.
Moved and supported to approve the agenda as submitted. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. The next item is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of December 3rd.
If there are no corrections, I will make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Support it. Moved and supported to approve the minutes as presented for the December 3rd meeting. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Next item is financial report.
We began the month with a hundred and sixteen thousand one hundred and forty-three dollars and ninety-one cents, and we took in receipts in the amount of twenty thousand three hundred forty-one dollars and twenty-one cents, and made dispersments in the amount of fifty-one thousand eight hundred seventy-two dollars and eighty-two cents, leaving us with an ending balance in the general fund of eighty-four thousand six hundred and twelve dollars and thirty cents.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the financial report as submitted.
Support it.
Moved and supported to approve the financial report as submitted. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. On to correspondence, item A's, Ms. Creek-Lanfield received this communication. And I called Mr. Williams, he wasn't in, I left a message, and we didn't connect today. They want to have a meeting, they have some ideas about townships paying directly for their contracted waste pickup in each township directly to the county. And I'm sure there'll be lots of questions. I was at a meeting this morning with several supervisors, and they didn't, they weren't real excited about it, but...
Well, that wouldn't affect us, since everyone just gets their own trash.
Well, it would affect you if you agree that it's a countywide thing, so...
But did you tell us this morning that they would recommend we go with one waste hauler instead of multiple waste haulers?
I'm sure they would suggest that. Now, I don't think they could mandate it, but...
Over our experiment.
Oh, I do, yeah. I do.
So anyway, there'll be a meeting on the 4th and 5th of February, and I'll let you know what's cooking, we'll see. The next item is item B, the road commission township meeting. We didn't set a reservation yet because Colleen and Patty said they could go if it went in the daytime. I know Dan's retired now, so I hold it for the meeting while I check this morning, and the 1 o'clock slot is full.
We could show up anywhere.
So, if you have a preference, speak up. There's two left, 3:30 to 5:30, and 6:30 to 8:30.
Whatever, ladies.
I'm not, no, I'm not going up there at night, you know what?
Really, the 3 o'clock to 5:30 shouldn't be bad.
Well, how's that for you?
It'll be fine, I can make it.
3:30 to 5:30?
I mean, is that good?
It's better than...
Yeah, I mean, I'd like, I'd like to see the entire board there, so...
Yeah, yeah. I don't know, I just, we've lost our power of negotiation. I don't know why we don't. They could just fax, they could just fax us the information. There's no negotiations here.
I still think it's of value because we do discuss issues here.
Well, I've been discussing the issue that I want them to address for the last five years, which is the completion of Meisner Road, and they just laugh in my face. I really, that's, you know...
I, I think though, like, our, our bridge projects that have really come along because of our discussions with them. And there's some issues like out, after the bridge is done, I would like maybe them to start, it seems like we replace culverts on a, when they fail. Maybe we should start looking after, we get the bridges done, start them looking at the culverts, which ones need to replace, or how to replace them when they fail, and...
That's hard to do.
I want my...
We don't know until...
Well, I don't know, I, we'll talk to the engineers and see what they have to say, what do they recommend? I still think there's value in me what, kind of road commission.
I'll tell you what, I got more out of going to the M.D.A. meeting than I do this road commission. Because they've got all, everything they're doing.
Plus, it's always good to have, you know...
Oh, yeah.
To interface with the county officials.
So what's your preference for time?
Well, the only time I'm going to even consider going is the earlier time. I'm not going at 6:30 at night.
That's fine, thank you.
So you want me to call tomorrow and shoot for the 3:30, and?
Yeah.
If for some reason that's full, then I guess we're out of game.
Then you're on your own at 6:30.
And we're gonna give you power for next year, right when this hits the thing, go for that early one.
Well, but I didn't, because you work, if, I didn't want to, you know, put you in a hard spot.
Yeah, I appreciate that, I really do.
Other years, both of you worked well, then, okay, but...
No, I couldn't.
I could've called you, I guess, but I didn't know they were gonna fill up that quick, but they did. Anyway, assuming that everyone doesn't go, they're gonna ask about the road tour. Now, we went last year. So, can we get some kind of consensus on this year, because they're gonna ask?
Well, the boys really enjoy going, and actually, I'd like to meet the new guy.
Duke?
Duke.
He was in the one day, but...
I didn't get to talk to him.
No.
I thought his name was Mike.
No, Mike retired. Mike's back on second.
Mike went back to second in command.
Right, we've got a new foreman.
Okay, well.
There you go.
But it's up to you guys.
See, that's the reason why we need to meet with the county officials. Duke is our new department, huh?
Yeah.
I don't mind, road tours are always...
It's up to you guys.
What do you think?
I'd like to go.
Yeah.
Well, we'll just have to take a shot at the date, see what happens.
I missed last year, so I'd like to go.
See, we had it last year, and then you missed it.
Something happened, I was working.
You know, and I always found interest, like a past one, especially when Arlene was on the board, how we, either Arlene or Colleen, or both of them knew exactly who lived in every house.
But it's, it's all different now. The kids are all gone.
And they have three.
We have no idea who these people are.
We gotta take Wayne now.
Yeah. But I mean, don't, don't we have the same, don't we follow the same principle of doing north and south roads one year, east and west roads the other year, as far as gravel hauls and, and things like that unless, unless an immediate problem pops up, you know, a culvert collapse or something like that, do we, isn't it better to stick to that formula rather than, you know, playing hopscotch all over the township? There's, there's a lot of reasons to that.
You're not gonna learn anything, other than interact. Because if it's dry out, everything looks great, and if it looks like today, everything's underwater as well. Neither one tells you anything.
The road, that road commission is the day before my election.
Which one?
The 25th.
The RISA?
Oh, the 24th?
The RISA election?
Yep.
That means?
That means if I'm not gonna go. We'll see.
Okay.
I, I may, I guess.
Well, we'll see what happens, see what time we can get. As far as the road tour, it's up to you guys.
I, I always like it.
Dan, wanna road, go on a road tour?
I'd love to. I mean, I, I'm not, I wouldn't force the issue on everybody if there was no one else that was interested.
Right, I mean...
But I've always found it interesting, and I'm a lot for everybody that's in the vehicle.
Yeah, last year with that big van, I mean, Wayne could come along in that.
Yeah, the county rent van.
Dave, you're not so interested this year.
No, makes no difference to me. I go to see Duke a lot anyway, so...
Well, maybe you can point out the highlights and lowlights of the township.
This Duke, what's his, how long has he been with the road commission?
Two months.
Two months.
Oh.
Or whatever.
Well, what's his background?
He worked for general contractors for many years. He's pretty knowledgeable guy. He's, I believe he's the mayor pro temp of Marysville. And I think he's gonna do well.
Yeah.
He's got enough experience to deal with stuff that we're already...
And he did really good in the snow, the snow we had.
Yeah.
Our, our roads were clear fast, faster than before, even with our good guys.
I think they did that countywide. Because they just got their buildings, they wanted to be good.
The highways weren't that good, I, I would've rather gone, yeah, rather gone on the back roads.
Well, that's it, there's not much you can do. With, the salt doesn't work on the frozen ones, so...
Okay, so when we go to the road commission meeting, if they want to set up a road tour, we'll go for that. Okay, moving on, no old business, new business, item A, resolution 2014-01, set an annual meeting and budget hearing date, and that date would be March 11th.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to set the annual meeting and budget hearing for 2014 at our March 11th meeting at 7:00 P.M.
That'll be to adopt that resolution.
Right.
Yes. Yeah, the adopt resolution 2014-01. Excuse me?
No, no problem.
Have you supported that, Dan?
Yes.
Okay, we need a roll call vote, please.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Me, yes. Bill?
Aye.
And Colleen?
Yes.
Okay, on the item B, resolution 2014-02, clerk salary. By state law, if a person wants an increase in salary, to be, you have to have the resolution in now, and then it'll be voted on at the annual meeting by the electors that are present at that time. So our clerk, Pat Algreen, has submitted an application type resolution for a 3% increase.
What action?
What, what, okay, I asked, what was the last time you?
Seven years ago.
Seven years ago.
Me and Colleen.
Can we have the supervisor?
No, I didn't fill one out.
He didn't fill one out.
If you don't have a resolution tonight, you're getting the same pay.
And right now, everybody's getting the same salary. So we're looking, the resolutions really put the clerk and the treasurer salaried ahead of the supervisor.
We've been in office a lot longer, too.
Yeah, I, I understand that, but it seemed like the supervisors should...
It's up to him. If he wants it, he can put in for it.
Right.
Doesn't bother me, at least, you know, if you think that's appropriate. They haven't had a raise in seven years. And this doesn't give them the raise. This only gets it to the annual meeting stage. It could be turned, there was six years ago, there was a resolution that was passed, and it was voted down at the annual meeting. So, whatever you're pleased to do.
Yeah, seven years ago. Um, all right, I'll, I'll make a resolution to adopt 2014 for a 3% raise for clerk, Pat Algreen.
I'll support it.
Okay, moved and supported to approve resolution 2014-02. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, take a roll call vote, please.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Me, yes. Bill?
Aye.
And Colleen?
Yes.
Okay, moving on, item C, resolution 2014-03. It's exactly identical to the last one, only it's for the treasurer's office. Same amount, same everything. And it's been the same length of time since she has had a raise.
I'll, I'll make a resolution to adopt resolution, I'll make motion to adopt resolution 2014-03 to increase the, uh, treasurer, Al Stover, 3%.
I'll support that.
Okay, moved and supported to approve resolution 2014-03. Any discussion? A roll call vote, please.
Colleen?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
Me, Joe?
Yes.
And Dan?
Yes.
Okay, moving on, every January, we have a action by the board to allocate money to an emergency road fund, which may be required sooner than you think. And the county really needs this, so they know that money has been allocated. If they put stone in a hole or something, that you have money set aside for.
Church road off Sinclair Highway coming.
Call the road.
That church is a problem.
It's a county road, we don't need money for that. But there's gonna be more, especially when the frost comes out.
Yes.
So, in past years, we've approved an emergency road fund of $20,000. So we would need more to actually try to do that again.
I saw moved that we set aside $20,000 from general fund to the, this road fund, um, in case of emergency.
I'll support that. Okay, moved and supported to set aside $20,000 for an emergency road fund. Any discussion? Once again, sounds like a roll call vote to me.
Okay. Colleen, yes. Bill?
Aye.
Me, yes. Joe?
Yes.
And Dan?
Yes.
Okay, moving on, item E, employee handbook update. Two years ago, because our two full-time hourly employees were also, one is deputy clerk, one's deputy treasurer, they were given a step in pay. So it kind of threw this off a little bit. So, like a dollar. So, seeing as how I was gonna bring it to the board tonight anyway, it's updated to what it should be right now. As far as the hourly rate, uh, someone hiring in starts at $11 an hour, then there's steps up through 10 years to $16 an hour. Then the last page of the enclosure, basically, it's a clarification, so it doesn't deprive anybody of anything. But I don't think it's gonna ever be necessary, but theoretically, it could stop some problems. Okay, if you don't put down yet, you earn it on a prorated basis. If you work till the 2nd of January, you can take all your vacation and hit the road. So, I would like to add that to the handbook also. Those are the two additions or corrections.
Make a motion to approve the additions and updates to our...
Employee handbook.
Employee handbook.
Support.
Okay, moved and supported to approve the correction and addition to the employee handbook. Any discussion?
Yeah, our one, our one ordinance we had in about firearms, has that been incorporated to the employee?
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that is board approval.
All right. Yeah, I know, I had board approval on it.
Oh, yeah.
All right.
Oh, yeah, it's right in the old book there. Now, it isn't, I don't know if it's stated in the paragraph form, but it's right in the book.
It's in the book.
Okay.
And it says exactly what?
About handbooks, you can't bring handbooks to it.
Right.
Did we include tasers?
No.
No, God, no, no.
Okay, so it was moved and supported, any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Okay, on to item F, vacation day for Brenda Loper. I explained in the update what necessitated this. Basically, it's in the same fiscal year and everything, but we're actually taking one of her earned vacation days from 2014, kicking it back to December 30th 2013, for the reasons I gave in the update.
Motion that we do that.
Support it. Okay, moved and supported to approve the transfer of the vacation day for Brenda Loper. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, item G, clear zoning fee schedule. Our planner, who has not had an increase since 2008, wants an increase. Now, the first two pages were the final, kind of the final edition of the increase portion. But I also included what he originally sent us, where it shows where he crossed off where he was increasing it. Now, the increases are pretty substantial. Uh, he's not increasing what the township pays. And he did not increase the hourly rates. But the planning reviews range from 30 to, the highest one is 50% increase. And that's over a six-year period. So I, I did call a neighboring township, they sent me, they told me one thing, sent me a copy of theirs, and the copy was absolutely different than what they told me. And the one they sent me is a lot more money than this. Now, if it turns out that, I asked the planner, he said these are comparable to their other clients, and...
Comparable to their other clients in Saint Clair County or Oakland County?
Well, he said, well, no, northern Oakland, when you get up to Attica, Metamora, and Lenox.
Townships or townships or...
Those are...
Not more as a township, Attica's a township.
Towneslock Townships or municipalities or villages or what?
Those are townships, I don't know if they're...
I'd like to go township to township.
I don't know if they're charter or, uh, general law, but...
Probably closest to Casco, would you like Imlay Township? I know they represent them.
So, whatever you want to do, we can negotiate some more with them. Uh, the original one he gave me showed an increase for home occupation. I told him that wasn't acceptable, so he dropped it back to what it was previously, and the rest are unchanged from what he originally proposed.
I make a motion to approve the clear zoning updated, uh, fee schedule.
I'll support it.
Do I have any idea what other planning planners charge?
Yeah, he checked.
Well, the one I checked, which is the neighboring general law township, they were charging them $700 a month, which is very comparable. But when they sent me the fee schedule, number one, you can hardly understand it, I have a copy down there, I was gonna give it to you, but I thought, it shows like a preliminary meeting before you formally submit. Was pretty cheap, was like 300 bucks. But then when you get into the, into the formal review, it was a thousand dollars.
And we've been very pleased with their services for a long period of time.
Uh...
Oh, yeah, I think so.
You guys see them more than I do. I hear secondhand, we seem to be getting good service from them.
Well, we have, you know, actually, the head man of the company, Rod, since it came to clear zoning, is the CEO, I guess you'd call it, and, uh, he's very knowledgeable.
He is.
That's my impression as well.
So, that's about as far as I explored it. I mean, we could always, if you want to look down the road, we can. The way that it's been going with development, he's not getting much business out of us anymore. And, uh, like I say, the one I got from the other neighboring township, if the, if they charge what the number said on the paper, they're 50% to 80% more than this. But when I called...
Do you have a motion on the floor to accept these rates, I think?
I think it's...
Yep.
Is that outside?
It's, it's been supported.
I supported it. But then, when I called them, I said, "Do you charge this much money for that?" Well, depends what size thing it is. I said, "It's not in the field." So I says, forget it. Okay, moved and supported to approve the fee schedule for clear zoning planning services. Any discussion?
Yeah, and I'm, I'll be, and I have no doubt that this is comparable to the other communities that Rod services plus other, eight other firms do that compare well.
Okay, no other discussion, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Item 3H, I put in your packet a copy of last year's, it's Homeland Security Emergency Management Community Liaison. Then in the update, I informed you that Colleen had volunteered, and then, uh, she said she would prefer if someone else did it. Mr. Bumgarden volunteered. Oh, he did go to the one meeting, and, uh, he's ready to roll.
Well, good for you, I feel safer all the time.
So I put this on there.
It's safer if I carry my gun in here, but I can't do that.
Well, yeah, sorry, you signed the papers with them.
Right, Homeland Security Liaison, sounds like a special...
So I thought I'd throw this in there, we get a motion to make it, because it is a federal government thing that, Mr. Wayne Bumgarden is our representative for community liaison.
And do you need a motion?
I think so.
So move all then, and...
Oh, all right.
Okay, moved and supported, is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Next item is payment of the bills.
Are there any questions on the bills?
There's one thing that puzzled me, I mean, Scott and I have questions.
All right, what?
I just didn't know what it was. What's a personal property kit, or a personal prop kit?
Those are to send out personal properties.
Say again?
It's to send out...
Every December, the assessor has to send out, if you're a business, you pay tax on personal property. So she sends a form out to you.
Right, it's the forms.
Every December. So, that one, I knew what that was.
Thanks for helping me out.
Just information, I didn't know.
Any other question?
I'm worried that we pay the bills.
Support it.
Moved and supported to pay the bills. Any discussion? If not, we'll roll call vote.
Wait a minute, who's supported?
Colleen?
Colleen did, I think.
She supported Dan, maybe.
Okay. I don't know where I was. All right, Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Patty, yes, Bill?
Aye.
And Colleen? Colleen?
Uh, yes.
Were you shaking your head?
Yeah, no, I'm shaking my head.
Okay, citizens' comments. Any comments from citizens?
No comment.
No comment? Careful.
Oh, I have a question.
Didn't, didn't, did, do you have any interest in going to the MTA?
You know, I don't know that, we got, uh...
Oh, I've forgotten the invitation.
They send your book.
It's in the book, but they used to send other stuff, it seemed like.
No, you mean, you mean the MTA?
The big one.
The one that we go with.
I didn't even, did you say anything about the dinner?
No.
Well, I think it may be later in February, because they're talking about Friday night.
I'm at the conference.
The conference, don't...
Because last.
Some of us went a number of years ago and and you know, you just took office, it's very educational, it's very educational.
I'm sure it is, but.
So and I just wanted to be of interest if you're looking for a shit.
Probably.
If we have enough funds to send you.
I'll go to the other things and talk to the other supervisor.
I mean, you're getting, getting good education already, no question, but.
Sometimes me, I've gone to the one day, it'll be, they have it every other year, it's like a, in the early spring, it's like in March, like March, I'll have it up in my. That's pretty informative.
A lot of education, a lot of educational sessions up there.
Well, you learn a lot just talking to others.
When it was at the rent, it was easier, you could drive down.
You can learn a lot just talking to other officials.
That's true.
So.
They always have the wrap up of what they've discussed in past at in the magazine.
Yeah.
Right after.
I would like to make um an announcement, the upcoming uh February twenty fifth um election for the Anchor Bay schools. You will not be voting at Chesterfield, you will be wa- uh voting here at our township. If you would like an absentee ballot, please call my office to get an application and you can get a ballot through my office. Uh, so Risa will be held here for East China schools as usual.
Have a question about the school districts, which school district has the most students in Casco?
Which school district has the most students?
Anchor Bay.
Anchor Bay.
Anchor Bay.
They.
And what not in Casco, I don't.
No.
What was the next one?
East China.
East China enrichment, okay. That's of the kids that live in Casco.
No, I have no idea about that.
Oh.
No.
You just wanna know which was the biggest district.
All we would know is is the parcels in the district, I wouldn't know how many children are.
Kind of interesting, yeah.
Yeah, um East China, Anchor, Anchor Bay has two schools, two elementary schools that uh Casco people go to. Um, and one middle school and the one high school. And East China has, you could go to two elementary schools. One middle school, one high school, so with the units.
One middle school, no, we got two.
Yeah, I know, but.
Oh, not for Casco, never mind, you're right.
Well, no, that's because anybody who lives by Adair Road would go to Saint Clair Middle School and Saint Clair High School. And anybody in this side would go to uh Marine City and Marine City just.
Oh, that's right.
The cereal.
So, mhm, but how many children come out of those parcels, I don't know, you know.
Okay, anyway, to wrap up what Patty was saying, on February twenty fifth. There's gonna be an election held, Township Hall. Half of it will be for Risa, which is the ISB in Saint Clair County, and that will be for the East China District. The other part will be for Anchor Bay in McComb County, and that is for a bond renewal. And those will be out here for the citizens of Casco that live in those two districts.
What is the rate of renewal in the Anchor Bay one, do you know?
I don't.
We got the ballots yesterday and I didn't get time to open the box, so.
Oh, I wonder.
I'm not sure, I hate to say it wrong.
Yeah, all right.
Okay, the other, go ahead.
Another announcement, people that have been used to going on our website, we have had a real problem. The program I was using is now defunct and they shut down my website. Um, our tech guy is trying to find me a new program. As soon as he can get it to me and teach me how to use it, our website will be back up and running.
We oughta get up, do a board picture so people can see who we are.
Probably could.
Put that on the list.
Put my camera, take a mocha.
Just bring our own cameras and just take selfies and.
Yeah.
Now you're thinking. Okay, anybody else have anything? Well, we're going to have a short meeting afterwards for the election, we have to uh appoint inspectors and stuff. But for this meeting, we're adjourned.
We're moving to adjourn.
Moved and supported to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Standing adjourned.